Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, September 22nd, 2025. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge Allegiance to the Silent Fair.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America through the Constitution of the public state, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Alderman Elsa.
Here.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Nujang.
Present.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Talladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovincarlo.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
All right, we have a quorum, and for the record, Alderwoman Cavallo has reached out, as well as Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy, both are not feeling well, and said they would not be able to attend. So with that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. Before we start tonight, I will let you know that Item 16 is going to be tabled, so just for your welcome, if you'd still like to speak on it, I guess, but Item 16 is going to be tabled. So with that, if you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, first speaker tonight from 105 Nora Street, Dominic Davino Jr.
Hello, my name's Dominic Davino Jr. I reside at 105 Nora Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. I want to talk about some stuff, especially the development and oversight of the Board of Education, Sarah Geary, and what she is requesting, which is a significant budget transfer of $4 million within the general fund to close out the fiscal year, and has submitted the year-end financial reports for your review. These are critical tools for maintaining a balanced budget and preparing for the year ahead. This is good. Please approve. The second, the largest category, is investing in our community. This is where I see tangible work of building a better Waterbury from this mayor's administration and you, the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen. Our Public Works Department is bringing forward a construction contract for Woodlawn Terrace Sewer Separation Project, a vital infrastructure improvement. An amendment is requested for engineering services on a major raised project. Perhaps most impactful are the items from our Board of Education. We have a series of agreements for software and service focused on student success, from the first robotics program in college readiness, support to early childhood education tools. These investments totaling over $2.3 million are direct commitments to our children's future. Other key investments include the Healthy Homes Contract to address the lead abatement, and new data management systems for the public records requests, and a tax assessment agreement to encourage redevelopment of 55 Cold Street, which signals positive economic development. Finally, on the under-finished business, we have important procedural matter regarding the flags. I believe it should be only government and municipal flags on city and government property, no other flag shown should be flown. In summary, this agenda you guys have in front of you is a snapshot of our city in motion. It shows us how you are responsibly managing taxpayer dollars and making strategic investments in our infrastructure, in our children, and working to establish clear and fair policies. I recommend we support, you support, the referrals to appropriate committees to their expert review, and look forward to productive discussion on these items as they return to a full board for final approval. I trust Mrs. Zimmerman will ask a lot of questions, Jack will ask a lot of questions, and anything financial to real estate, you guys got one of the best people on your board to give you those answers to those questions. End finish, this will probably be my last time before a new body comes here. I appreciate everything you guys do for the little you get paid, and the criticizing and the bashing during political times. I don't know how you do it. I pray for you all every day. I criticize people, but we're all people, and I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Kondash.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Kondash. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. Tabled or not, my comments are going to be directed at Item 16 on your agenda that has been removed. I want you to know what I've been getting from the pulse of the city, because you need to know. Item 16 is asking for your approval of a tax abatement for the St. Mary's Properties Development. The property is being sold by the city for $1.6 million. The developer will be investing $4 million into the property, and is anticipating a $9 million grant from the state. If they do not receive the grant, there will be no sale. Based on those numbers, the completed project would be worth around $14.5 million. The 70% assessed tax value would be over $10 million. The tax bill for one year would be around $500,000. $500,000. And for 11 years, would be around $5.5 million in taxes, not including additional tax revenue generated by real estate market growth. Even a modest growth of 3% a year, that property would increase by 33% in 11 years, making it worth around $19.7 million in year 11. This abatement would set a fixed value of $1.5 million for 11 years, and therefore an assessed tax value of a little over $1 million a year for the next 11 years. That means the taxes paid to the city would be around $45,000 a year, and the tax abatement not paid to the city would be around $450,000 a year. That means the developer will pay taxes of around $500,000 in 11 years, and with this abatement, will not have to pay around $5 million of taxes to the city of Waterbury, not counting the taxes on property value growth. The taxpayers of the city of Waterbury, that will mean a loss of tax dollars of over $5 million in the next 11 years. $5 million, it's amazing, okay? It also means that the developer will not only get back every penny of their $4 million investment because they're going to receive a tax abatement of $5 million. So they're not putting up a penny of their own money, but they're going to make a million dollars profit on the abatement. I've never heard of that. I'm sorry, I've never heard of that. While this abatement may be legal by state statutes, it is bordering on immoral. This is not fair to the taxpayers of the city of Waterbury, and it is poor fiscal management of our tax dollars. If there was a vote tonight, I would be asking my Republican colleagues on the board, and my Democratic friends on the other side of the aisle, to vote no on this proposal. Let's wait for a fair and equitable tax abatement proposal, which we give to a lot of businesses. That's how you entice them to come to the city. But we don't give them millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, okay? Let's present a proposal that does not hurt the taxpayers of the city of Waterbury with impunity. Thank you.
Next speaker from 5 White Birch Drive, Joseph Bannon.
Hello, I'm Joseph Bannon, 5 White Birch Drive, and my greetings to the board, to the city clerk, the city sheriff, and to the mayor. And I realize that Item 16 has been tabled from the agenda, but my comments have to do also on the broader sense of the city's activity in purchasing real estate. So I'm going to go ahead with my comments. Before this St. Mary's deal was tabled tonight, I thought it was quite possibly the worst deal for the taxpayers to ever come before this board. We're going to give an 11-year tax abatement to a developer that doesn't even own the property yet. And first of all, this whole deal lacks transparency. The K-Bar presentation was never presented to this Board of Aldermen. We don't know who was on the selection committee. We don't know who the other bidders were. We don't know the criteria by which the proposals were judged. And most importantly, we don't know whether or not the other bidders were offered the same tax abatement. The deal on the table offers an 11-year tax abatement locking in a valuation of $1,050,000. This amounts to a tax payment of about $45,000 per year. This offers absolutely no fiscal benefit to the city's taxpayers. The total taxes collected over the 11-year timeframe will be about $520,000, but K-Bar will be locked into the assessment of $1,050,000. But meanwhile, the rest of the city, we're going to go through another revaluation, and everyone else's taxes are going to go up. And the developer is not really even using their own money. They're banking on a State of Connecticut grant of $10 million. The total project upon completion will be valued at more than $16 million. This abatement means that the city of Waterbury will be leaving almost $8 million in tax revenue on the table. Now, I certainly understand the need for Waterbury to redevelop properties, and I understand that developers need to make money, and I understand that tax abatements are part of the process of bringing about a development. But I urge the board to ask the administration to renegotiate a plan that's more equitable to the taxpayer. And I believe that any member of the board that supports this motion is really voting against the interest of the taxpayer. And a couple of thoughts about real estate in general. The city should be more cautious about making real estate purchases. The city bought Rose Hill, and it ended up with the YMCA and forever off the gram list. The city bought the acreage on Park Road, which some people call a pile of rocks, out there near Western Hills Golf Course years ago. Now, that property remains undeveloped and produces no tax revenue. The city bought St. Peter and Paul only to find out that the school needs hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to renovate that property, to do the HVAC, to do the roof, to bring it into compliance, to bring it up to ADA. And on top of that, we bought Sacred Heart. And when we bought Sacred Heart, we had plans for a homeless property center.
One minute.
We had plans for an employment center to help the homeless, even a homeless shelter. But it's been two years. That property is still sitting vacant, and the city is collecting absolutely no tax revenue. So that property remains vacant and off the gram list. And let's not forget the money that Exchange Place has become for the taxpayers for the city of Waterbury. So as a word of caution, I would urge the city of Waterbury and its leadership to get out of the real estate business. Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Samaska.
Good evening, Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I wish well those who are going off the Board of Aldermen, and I thank you for the times that we've been able to share. And I wish you all, wherever you're going and whatever you're doing, a better path. Tonight, another blast. Last week, 4:30 PM afternoon, I'm upstairs typing, my feet are on the floor, I felt the vibrations in my feet, and my windows shook. Is this acceptable? I don't know, and I wonder why. And if it is based on shock waves coming through ledge, would somebody please help me know what to do? My dogs bark. I get concerned, what is this? Why is this happening so far away from the Amazon site? Copper and pipes. Did Waterbury put in or still have in copper pipes underground? Many cities have done that in the past. Copper is dangerous. It's a health problem when it's over a certain amount. Is this being tested? Do we have information on this? Do landlords in the city know what to do if they have copper pipes in their own homes or the homes that they are renting out? I ask that because it's another concern for health. Medical insurance. I'm concerned for our vets. In the last week, a radiology office called and said, "You have to check now with your insurance, because we don't know if your x-ray is going to be covered." Changes are happening before 2026, okay? I have a family member who needs a surgical procedure. We looked up the cost. It could be well over $3,000. If it was done six months ago, it would be free to us. That puts a question. Do we want to do that procedure? Do we want to risk it? There are risks. There are benefits. But why is this happening? Our supplemental insurances are up by $50 for each policy. Deductibles and co-pays have risen. There are now threats to Social Security, and I please ask that our representatives in Hartford and Washington advocate for our elderly vets, because there is still the rumor that disability is going to be stopped. Agent Orange is not going to be covered the same way. Neither is cancer. Our vets serve this country. They gave their lives for us. The least we can do is look at this at Workers' Comp and support them. I would ask our mayor tonight to please consider an article in the Brass Bulletin regarding open burning and the acceptable material to burn in fire pots. On Saturday, suddenly a large amount of dense smoke came down Peach Street and Pear Street like a rushing bomb. Didn't know where it was from, looked up, it was across the street. That fire had the potential to spread very rapidly. It looked like it was at the back of a garage or it was in the brush. It was hard to tell. However, with the drought conditions, think about it, that place is less than 20 feet from the neighbors. If you get a fire started in a situation like that, it's danger in the drought. What is the proximity? Who measures that? Are we allowed open burning in Waterbury? I thought we weren't. If this person or family did not have a permit, they were doing this. It looked like no one was home. And how that happened, I can only wonder. Do people understand the dangers that they are facing and causing us? It is reported that the fire danger is now getting higher, and if the drought continues, it will still grow. I remind you of the fire in 2015 at Bristol Babcock, which was also in a drought. It didn't take much to become a conflagration, and it affected our lives. It affected our property. I ask you, is it right to subject residents to dangers
One minute.
in their health and safety when someone fails to follow the law? Hunting on Sundays, I am strongly against. I'm asking, who's going to monitor that? There are 400, it's a 400-yard barrier that has to exist between that private property and the next property that's over. How are you going to monitor that? I will tell you this spring. I am still sad over what I know happened. There was a doe and two fawns feeding in the CRRA dump. It's a beautiful thing, and I saw them two or three nights in a row. All of a sudden, at dusk the last night, I heard gunshots. I never saw the doe or the fawns again. If I called the police department, it wouldn't be helpful. It's already done, and the person would already be gone. How do we stop this? And I definitely say, one of the ways to prevent it, at least some of it, is not to support this law, is to do something about it. Boundaries can't be measured. How are we going to know? How are you going to know who has a permit?
Next time.
And it's a gun. And a gun is dangerous. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Maritale Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Maritale Road. Before I start, I'd like to wish all the Aldermen who are leaving the best of luck, and I'm sure you'll find success. A lot of you helped me out. I know, I appreciate that. I know Alderman Mike Savio was a member of the Waterbury Community Club for a long time. He helped us out quite a few times, and it was nice to see everybody working together. I know we just had our picnic August 23rd, and it was a lot of people came, and I do appreciate it. I know even Elvis was in the house. So I appreciate him being there. My brother Harry is a big Elvis fan, but he couldn't make it. He had to work. But nevertheless, I just wanted to say, I want to wish you guys all the best of luck. And we may not agree on a lot of different things, you know, but I still think, you know, you guys are awesome, and you've always been polite and kind to me. And I hope I don't get a lot of negative feedback about this, because I speak from the heart, okay? I'm not here to play politics either. I'm here to just speak how I feel from my heart, okay? Also, I want to let you know on Item 16, I'm somewhat disappointed. I know there was a lot of great speakers here tonight speaking about that. I wanted to talk on this abatement. I didn't get a chance to. I don't know why it was tabled and pulled from the agenda. Obviously, it's going to be tonight, but hopefully in the future, people could, you know, when you have something on the agenda, please just leave it on the agenda. Because, you know, you've got people who work all day and night and come down here and they want to speak. Some people get some great presentations here. Would they agree with you or not? This administration, would they like to say, "You're interested in doing things or not?" The bottom line is, you know, we all got to come together for the betterment of people. So that's what I want to say. The other thing, it was in the paper over here about Waterbury Hospital, Best Path for Success, and I, hopefully, it's going to be very successful. And the reason why I brought this up, because I have something here on my family, and I'll be really brief, because this is pretty well written out that I wrote, okay? I have something on this. Warren S. Frost was born in Torrington, Connecticut, January 19, 1827. Later moved to Waterbury, Connecticut. He was a Republican and served several years on the Waterbury Common Council, today's Board of Aldermen. He married Eda J. Spring, daughter of Thomas and Candace Holcomb, which is related to our family, and who lived in Collinsville. And they had eight children. Edna and Warren were later married. They had only one son, Dr. Charles W. S. Frost, born in Waterbury, December 22, 1857. And he received his early education in public schools. He went to Yale. He did quite a bit, went to medical school, and he was a really good doctor. He opened up his own practice. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because you think about Waterbury. So many great people came back to Waterbury and decided to live here, whether they were in the service or not. I know Michael was in the Army, and I appreciate your service, Michael, and you came back to Waterbury to live, and I appreciate that. And there was a lot of people who are veterans here today too, and I think that's awesome. The reason why I bring this up to coincide with Waterbury Hospital, if anybody goes to Waterbury Hospital, the Hall of Fame down there, they have a wall, you'll see his name there. And that's his name, and he is related to our family, okay? And I'm very proud about that. And I never knew this until my wife and I, we did some research with the family. We went up to Collinsville, and not only that, right now, his family is resting in Riverside Cemetery, okay? So that's where they are right now. I mean, you know, obviously, it's a long time ago, but the bottom line is, this is something that's very inspirational for us and very important, that we had a family member, not only was on the Board of Aldermen, thank you, Mr. President, quite a while ago, and I never knew it was called the Board of Alders. I think they still use that name in New Haven and Hartford, but the bottom line is, he did a lot for Waterbury, and this is very important. I want everybody to notice, off of Maritale Road is Frost Road. Do you know they named Frost Road after him and the family for all the job and everything they did in the city of Waterbury? So I am very, very proud of that. And if anybody thinks I'm making this up, I could show you all the paperwork I got at home, and I could prove it, okay? And I was going to have a lot more to say, but another thing is, we had a meeting in Waterbury Community Club recently with our officer and Andrew Moffett, and there's issues in Waterville with people speeding, going through red lights. I hope that gets rectified, accidents and everything, up and down Chase Avenue. And the other thing is- And the other thing is, there's memorials all over the place.
That's time.
Okay, there's a memorial on Thomas and Avenue that's been there for like five years. And hopefully, we can get that cleared up. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, September 8th, regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen and public hearings. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion? Motion to approve. Alderman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor approving the minutes is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Mayor? Okay. Next item on the, so with that, before we recess into committees, item number 18 was, the cover sheet was only sent last week. The actual rest of the agreement was sent to you in an email. And item 19 was a placeholder, and the agreement on that was, I believe, sent to you on Friday. So that was a placeholder for item number 19. Item number 20 is going to have to be walked on. It's a state grant for the Child Passenger Safety Grant for $223,117.45. It was given to the city very late, and it has a deadline of 10/1. So we have to get this grant application in, in order to qualify for the grant. So with that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 20 to the agenda?
Motion to add item 20 to the agenda.
Alderman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of adding item number 20, which will be taken up by intergovernmental, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item 20 is added. With that, we'll recess into committees, and we'll start with finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following zoning commission application refund as submitted by Robert Nurney, City Planner. R.A. Hazzes Corporation, $600. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refund.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion passes. Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund for the following as submitted by Frank Baker, Acting Building Official. Sunrun Kelly Carson, $135. Sierra Electric, $382.50. John Lantieri, $675. Total Mechanic Systems, $810. Sunrun Installations Services Incorporated, $1,012.50. Trinity Solar, $1,085. Trinity Solar again, $1,102.50. Horton Electrical Services, $1,525. Trinity Solar, $1,687.50. And Sunrun Installation Services Incorporated, $3,577.50. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the refunds is read.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven, Alderman Mosley has recused himself. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $4,050,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes.
Good evening, Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight.
I have numerous questions on this. And first and foremost is that, I'm going to make a statement, first of all, that when we were passing this budget, I said that there was a lot of things that were inflated in order to create a surplus. And I'm not going to say I told you so, but here it is right in front of us. We have an automatic surplus on things that weren't spent, through whatever reasons. And if you took a look at what I had put together with my colleagues as an alternative, the numbers are almost exactly what we came up with. And we did it again for the current budget, and we were told we submitted it way too late. Well, I'm going to suggest that before we vote on this, we get a lot more information, because there's a lot of stuff on here that's pretty ambiguous. It does name things for the good of the city, for this, for that. It's a lot of money being spent around here, and I'd like to see where this money is actually going. The money in particular for economic development, that's a lot of money to not have a designation DPW, it was pretty clear that, you know, we're going to spend that money on sidewalk upgrades and stuff like that. That's not a problem. Trying to think of some of the other ones that I had. There's numerous other ones, and I really think that at this time, without having all this information, we can't just say, go ahead and do it. I think we need to have a breakdown of what these ambiguous things are. And before I get criticized, I looked at the presentation we had and at the full agenda numerous times, and the statements were very ambiguous. And before I turn around and say, it's okay, take the $4 million, it's extra money, do what you want with it, I want to know where it's going. I really do want to know where it's going. Not that I'm going to say no, not that I'm going to question anybody's validity or anything, but I want to know where it's going, because it's going to be very hard for me to look at taxpayers and say, yeah, well, they had $4 million extra, so we just said, go ahead, do what you need to do with it. I know some of it's going to the surplus fund and stuff, but I really like to know where this money's going. So I'm going to ask that this be tabled until we get some more information, just because I think it's necessary for us as the deciding people and for the taxpayers to know what's happening to this money that was surplus when we predicted we were overestimating what we needed for taxes. This is taxpayers' money that we could have done without, obviously, in the year 2024, '25, which would have meant that our taxes were a little bit lower. And we're in the same situation now in 2026 budget. And I was a little more detailed when we put together the presentation, and we were told it's the last minute. But I came in tonight again and found three things on my desk. I mean, it's never too late to table something. It's too late to say, okay, and just go ahead blindly. That's my problem. I don't want to tell you we're not going to do it. I'm not going to tell you that it is wrong. What I'm telling you is that we need the information, and it's only responsible for us as the governing body to know what the hell we're talking about, at least once in a while. So I'd appreciate it if we could table this. So I make that motion that this be tabled until further information is given.
Okay, is there a second to table the motion? Okay, is it? Did someone, oh, your second? Okay, well, we will take a vote, we'll do a roll call?
Alderman Elsa?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Mosley?
He's recused himself.
Oh, he's not there? Alderman Nujan? Alderman Rinaldi? Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Okay. Right, we have four no, two yes.
Okay, so the, so the item is failed? Yes. Okay, and we will return to the original motion to approve item number seven? Any further discussion?
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm looking at page 147 with the numbers and with the account unit number and account numbers. I see the sidewalks improvements. Is that an additional 2.7 million to what we approved in the budget? And if so, how much more in a stretch, like how many more sidewalks would that include?
So, yes, to answer your question, that's in addition, it's surplus money. So right now, there's 1.5 million that was, is in low SIP money from the 2024 fiscal year that's available. That program is going, 2025 fiscal year, that's available. They've been working off of that money, and the season's coming to an end, and we'll see whether we try to continue that, at least through the winter, if we have a mild winter. Plus another five, another 1.5 million that is in the low SIP funds for the upcoming fiscal year, so those two. And then, this is the 2.7 million, which is out of the surplus, that we would also add in to do sidewalk work. So for the upcoming year, we would have $6 million worth of money available to work on sidewalks.
At what point do we get suggestions from city residents on kind of, you know how we put out, hey, you know, what streets need to be paved this upcoming year? And, you know, people kind of make a suggestion, and then we normally send out the list in the fall for what's being paved? Are we doing something like that for the sidewalk?
If this money gets approved and we have the program available, we would put together an RFP for a paving contract, and we'd go out to bid. As part of that RFP, we would have, you know, generally what roads we would do, but we would open it up like we do with, or sidewalks, we'd open up like we do for the roads, where people could, you know, make requests coming in for where they wanted to see sidewalks, and we could take a look at all of that and work it through. So, you know, we would be open to doing that sometime in the next couple of months as we get ready to put that, the program together for the springtime. So unlike roads where the asphalt plants close for the winter, depending on what the winter looks like, you could actually do sidewalks through a relatively mild winter. If you don't have a lot of snow and the temperature stays, you know, somewhere above, I think they tell me it's the teens at this point, but, you know, somewhere in those ranges, we could actually, you know, do some of this work through the winter or the early spring if we wanted to. I can tell you, there's no place in the city that doesn't need sidewalks done, except for some of the ones we've done already around schools and things like that. So, yeah, this is something that would be, you know, across the city is really a need that needs to be met.
We measure street paving by plowing, et cetera, by how many miles of roads are available.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know how many miles of sidewalks there are.
Are we going by, like, I mean, it's kind of hard to do miles, right?
No, you can't, because the roads and a lot of the developments today, like where I live up at Bunker Hill, off the main road, there's no sidewalks. So all those roads, which are part of the 300 miles, don't have sidewalks. But Bunker Hill Avenue, for instance, which has whatever the miles is for that, has sidewalks on both sides in places, so you've got double sidewalks. So it's hard to say. I do think sidewalks are about the same as roadway to pave. It's probably about six miles.
I don't know if they went by feet or...
Yeah, about six miles, probably, roughly, in this. Now, that also, what's going to also add to the cost a little bit is because we start redoing, wherever we redo sidewalks, there are new ADA requirements for curb cuts that have to be made. So anytime you touch a sidewalk, you put in the brand-new curb cuts as well as part of that. So it's, you know, so there's an added cost to doing some of that. But yeah, that's what, this is an extra 2.7 out of the surplus would go towards doing sidewalks.
For Waterbury Promise for another $250,000, how much does the city allocate to them on a yearly basis? And are we fully funding them, or do they do their own?
They do their own fundraising as well. There's a million dollars that was approved this year in the general fund budget for Waterbury Promise that the city put in as part of the budget, and then this is an additional $250,000. The program is growing. It's now, you know, up to the full $5,000 match for all of the students who are going through, so, and the numbers of students who are participating continue to grow year over year as well.
How many students do we have this year?
That I'd have to find out for. I'm not sure what the number is. But don't forget, every year, you know, since they've been graduating, we're adding a year. So we're going to get to that point where we have four years' worth of students in college going forward, and we're working towards that.
I see some money going to DPW. Is there, I mean, I think some of our plow trucks, or at least the blades, have been kind of beat up over the last couple of years. Any allocation to try to replace or add to our fleet?
I mean, we continue to do an upgrade of the fleet on a regular basis. I think the equipment is, you know, kept up at this point, to the extent that... Oh, yeah, this one is not for vehicles. It would be for some of the projects that DPW is doing. So it would be capital projects that they're doing, not for vehicle-related. There is money in there to continue to upgrade the vehicles and stuff, so. In the budget, not in this, in this package.
And the senior shuttle program, that's something that, when I was at the senior center, we talked about about a month ago. Who will, is there an existing shuttle right now or no?
Yeah, there is a senior shuttle program. We put money in in the past through the CDBG program. In many cases, especially with ARPA over the last couple of years, we've programmed some ARPA money into that instead of, instead of CDBG, so we could put more money into the CDBG programs. But this is a program that helps seniors get the doctor's appointments. It can take them to different things they need to do throughout the week so that they can remain mobile. It's heavily subscribed, and it generally, you know, comes close to running out of money every year. So this $200,000 will help them.
So this is going from a senior citizen's home to doctor appointments, not to the senior center?
Right. It could take you to the senior center if you want to take a ride, but you would call, it would meet you at your house, and it would take you to a doctor's appointment or to the senior center.
Is that another agency that handles the shuttle? It's not like a City of Waterbury shuttle, is it?
We have a contract with Ambassador to run those.
Okay.
Yeah, and they run it.
I don't know if it was like, through new opportunities type of thing?
It doesn't cost the seniors anything to utilize it, so.
That's it. Thank you for your time.
Alderman?
I'd like to ask a few more, more direct questions. On the economic development efforts, there's $400,000 earmarked for that. Don't we typically have something to get these projects started? And do we have other projects in the works that we have been ignoring that now we got to put $400,000?
This money would be available for like doing appraisals, some economic development studies, other things that would be helpful to do it. I don't think, there's not identified projects at this point that go along with this money. It's just seed money so that when the opportunities come along, you can do the initial analysis to decide whether you want to go forward with them or not.
But we have money already budgeted to do a lot of that, correct? In the adopted budget, there was a line item for these things.
Sure, so we do include a contribution in the operating budget for some economic development efforts, specifically our contracted works group for marketing. That contribution's included in the general fund budget. But this additional funding out of surplus, like the mayor described, is more for the upfront costs that come up, like environmental studies, outside legal cost appraisals, so that we're able to do those during the year. And it wouldn't be for, you know, any type of large capital project. It's more for the smaller costs related to economic development activities, and we could also use it to promote the city in order to attract development and business opportunities to the city. So that's what this funding would be used for.
I still think we need to be a little more specific. $400,000 might seem like not a lot in the budget.
The one thing I would add is that anything that would require a contract, the contract would come before the board for approval. So this is just appropriating the funding for this purpose. Um, so this is just appropriating the funding for this purpose and then any, I, um, anything in, anything specific that would require a contract, the contract would come to the board for approval.
Is that the same case with the Brownfield properties then?
That would be with everything. Anything that requires a contract, that the contract needs to be approved by this board, the contract would come before the board for approval.
Okay, and the community improvement activities, $150,000?
That's what covers things like when the park came up short.
I predicted and the 20 people in this room will tell you right now, I said the first thing he's going to say to me is, oh, you got the Stonehouse thing. That was 1,000.
But those are the kinds of things...
But 150 times more than that, but again...
Right, it goes, it goes to those kinds of things, just for small groups that need a little bit of assistance.
But how many things do, how many things do we do? This is one, you know, the, the point I'm trying to make is that, not that this money's being wasted, but it would sure be better in the taxpayer's pocket at this point for these feel-good, wonderful things that we do. And, you know, it is possible to do them, but at the same time, we got people out there that are struggling, struggling hard. And it, I find it very hard to just say, we're just taking four and a half million dollars and just doing what we're doing, whatever the number is, I'm sorry. Um, and just, they'll take care of it. It's all going to go to good things. Sure it is, but wouldn't it be better to have dropped a mill or two or three?
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, that, that's, that's what the people need is relief at some point. We still, we've accomplished a lot with what we've done and I, I commend everybody with the budgets and what we've done with it. But when we overcharge to begin with and then we have a surplus at the end, I still can't help but feel bad for the people who are struggling just to make what we said we were going to spend. And now we're going to go do something else. You know, I, I'd love to give my kids 500 presents under the tree. So what? You're only going to get 10 this year because that's what I could afford. But you're getting presents. You know?
Will you adopt me, I said, if you're giving presents at Christmas? So let me just put it in perspective. So the city ran last year, just like this year's budget, about $444 million. That's the budget for the city to operate for the year. Um, you can agree or disagree whether that's, that's, but that's the, the budget that's been there. I think it's realistic for a city the size of Waterbury. Um, this 5.1, 5.2 million dollars represents 1.2% of the overall budget. So basically, we set a budget a year in advance, starts actually probably 18 months in advance of the close of the fiscal year to try to meet all of the needs of the city on an ongoing basis, and we came within 1.2% of doing that. The flip side is if you put it really close, and, you know, we've had, we've had two really mild winters. We could have had bad snowstorms. Uh, a year ago, in '24, there was a massive rainstorm that came through the area, flooded every surrounding town. South Curry just reopened their library. They had to dig out from that. Oxford had to repair something like five or six different bridges. We had no problems with that. I remember, uh, Mayor Hess from Auguste called me up that night and he says to me, do you need some help, some assistance with equipment or whatever? And I said, no, why? He said, well, because it's really a mess down here. And I had to call Dave Simpson and say, did you not tell me something? And we didn't have the same devastation, but one small variation of that storm and we could have faced the same problem. Same thing this year with the, with the rain. So all I'm saying is to come within 1.2% of the target on the plus side, I don't think is a, a bad place to be. I think that's about as close as you can get to hitting the mark as you want to be because if you cut it back a little bit and you have one little thing that goes off the other way, we could be $5 million in debt right now. Given the history of this city and where we came from, I think that's not something that we would like to be doing. Then you look at where you are. So the question becomes, do you just refund the $5 million to the taxpayers? And I guess that's a legitimate question, right? We can have that discussion if you'd like. But here, one of the things that I think is true as you go through the city is sidewalks. A lot of people talk about sidewalks. So out of the surplus this year, we said we're going to put the, the lion's share of that into trying to do some sidewalks and bind with the other money, I think we can make some difference at $6 million. Um, economic development efforts, it helps. We're trying to develop the city so you have a little bit of extra cash. You know, again, $400,000 out of a $444 million budget is a small percentage of that to help the city get some preliminary work done. Uh, Waterbury Promise is helping kids who otherwise would not go on to college to get the, uh, chance to go there. It's not only the $5,000 in scholarships. And by the way, UConn and several other state schools now match that, so it's a $10,000 scholarship. It's a last dollar scholarship, which means you have to apply for financial aid and other things and you get out of that $10,000 as much as you come up short. It's helping our students who would otherwise struggle to pay and get a college education if they choose to have it. More importantly, Waterbury Promise works with students to make sure that they get from high school into college and it helps them with things that were, I think, confusing 40 years ago when I applied to college. Today, it's even more difficult to get through the maze of applications and FASFA forms and all of that. And these programs help kids who might not otherwise get to college. And a lot of our students going to college are first generation. They don't have families that have gone through the process that can help them. So this is a pro- so I think the 250 going there is worthwhile. It's helping our poorest citizens. Senior shuttle, seniors who otherwise would be homebound can call. They can only use it, I think, once a week, but they can get to a doctor's appointment that maybe they otherwise couldn't get to or get to the senior center to get some socialization they wouldn't otherwise be able to get. That's helping some of our poorest people. Community improvements, I know we joke about it, but those kinds of things are important. That day when the park opened and people came and there was a celebration, those are important things we do culturally in this city and bringing together a sense of community. So we put 200,000 in there. Again, a very tiny percentage of where that's, uh, of the budget is. And finally, this one talks about brownfields at $100,000. I mean, this city is still pockmarked with brownfields. We've made some great strides. We're continuing to try to move forward there. So, I, I mean, I don't think that we're so far off base. If we had a $25 million surplus, I'd agree with you. But $5 million is almost as close as you could get to being on the mark as I think you want to be comfortably. I don't know if in your house, you, you can run a budget every year that says, I'm going to bring in $150,000 and I'm going to spend $150,000.
I can't do that. I can tell you right off the bat.
You know, I mean, so whatever, you know, those, I, I get it, um, you know, and, and at the end of the day, realistically, I'm not saying that it, it, it doesn't matter at all, but when you're talking about one mil of the city's budget is worth about $5 million of that in that budget. So, you know, you would be returning one mil. It's not, if, if, for individual people, I don't want to say it's nothing, but what I'm saying is I think the effect of putting it into Waterbury Promise, putting it into the senior shuttle, putting it into the sidewalks, has a bigger bang and is going to benefit people in a greater way than simply giving them a refund of tens of dollars, maybe $100. That's what this really comes down to. It's, I'm not saying you're not right. I don't respect your opinion, but I think this is what we're asking you to do. If you disagree, you can take a different approach. But I have to present you something. I think it's realistic, I think it's fair, and I think it makes sense. And I think, I commend the folks who run the budget in this city, that we can come up with a budget, you know, put 300 police officers on the street, 234 firemen in firehouses, plow 300 miles of road in a difficult city in which plowing some of these roads is almost impossible and we keep all that done. The parks have never looked better in the city and they're well-kept up across the city, uh, you know, and we're continuing to work on, on many of them to get, get the last few that we haven't gotten to. So those, I think, are important things to do for quality of life issues that people want. So that's kind of where this is, um, and I commend them because they run a budget that comes in that close, year after year after year. And I know you all get tired of hearing me say it, but I'm going to tell you, because we're still paying these bills till 2037, 84 million off the top goes to pay for pension bonds and healthcare costs that are out there that are, will be resolved at some point as we move forward. But that's 84 million that's not going to pay for any of the day-to-day things out of that $444 million budget, which would leave you with a mil rate of somewhere just over 30 mils if you backed those, those numbers out of the budget. So that's kind of where we are. I think it's a great story and I think, um, it's so, that's, you know, with that, I'll, you know, turn it back over to you if you have any more questions, but...
You know, my point is this, that we, we also did not get the money from Waterbury Hospital, which was anticipated, so this surplus would have been...
We're not done with that yet. Yale, Yale has, um, settled with, uh, uh, Prospect Medical Holdings and there will be some money that may be forthcoming, um, from that. I don't think it's the money we were expecting, not expecting, but the money that was there, but given the bankruptcy, there will be some money coming back from that.
But, well, my point, my point is that that would have been additional revenue that should have, if everything washes out, that would have been added to this surplus because that would have been money that we didn't spend if we got it.
Except that we have gone, um, uh, to supplemental pilot money over the last two years because of what was going on with Waterbury Hospital, about $5 million that came in that helped cover some of those costs that the state's not going to continue, uh, dealing with us over once the hospital situation is settled. But it was initially because of the transition back from for-profit to not-for-profit. There would have been a one-year period where we would not have been able to get pilot either. And then through the bankruptcy, um, there's been that, what do they call it? Supplemental, uh, Pilot Plus or something they were calling it, to get us through that, which helped us through those numbers. So without, without that from the state that covered the pilot, we would have been actually just about at, at zero over all of this, so.
Okay, I...
I know.
I, I, again, I'm not going to tell you that these things are wrong to spend. I'm just saying that we budgeted stuff and that's what we should be living with because everybody else out there has to.
I know, but we're not...
You come to my house, we live on the budget. You come to the next-door neighbor's house, we live on that budget. We can't come back and say, hey, we didn't spend so much on groceries this week. You know, we're putting it away for next week when it goes up, but...
Yeah, but we can't, you...
But we can't...
We can't do that here.
But we have to struggle every week to make it to the end. That's the, that's the struggle that I'm having, you know?
One, one, 1.2%, if you were to bring that down to what the average person makes, is not a whole lot of money off of your budget on an, or my budget on an annual basis, right? 1.2% doesn't leave you a whole lot of room, so. But I, I get, I respect where you're coming from. I'm not just disagreeing with you conceptually. I just, you know, this is where we're coming from and it's now we get to decide how we're going to proceed.
Okay. Well, I guess we agree to disagree, which is okay.
As long as we're not disagreeable, I think we're doing well.
Is there further discussion? Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we understand our colleagues' concern on this. But to Sarah, on page 147, is that a breakdown of the $4 million in every, in items going down for the $4,500,000? Just to be clear?
Sure, I think, are you referring to this page? Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have the full agenda packet open, so I just wanted to make sure it's, it's the third page of the actual budget transfer item?
I believe, yes, yes.
Yeah, so that does have the listing.
So that tells where all that $4, $4 million is going to be spent.
Correct. The $4,500,000 is all, um, listed on that page to the accounts that it's going to. And, um, pages one and two, uh, the actual memo also give, uh, details about the projects where the funding is going. And as the mayor's mentioned, a significant portion of the $4,500,000 is going to the sidewalk improvement projects. That's 2.7 million dollars.
Thank you. And to be clear too, with that, with putting the money in them, if that money's spent out of that different department, everything has to be done with the contract and RFP, correct?
Correct. Anything that would rise by our purchasing ordinance, anything that would, um, require going out to bid or RFP, requiring a contract, you would ultimately receive the contract for approval. So the sidewalk improvement program, once it goes out to RFP, you'll ultimately receive the contract for the sidewalk improvements in order to approve it. Approval of the $2.7 million in this transfer, along with the previously approved LoSiP funding, which gets us to that $6 million total that was mentioned, we can't go out tomorrow and just spend $6 million. You'll be getting the contract for approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Yes, Alderman?
Thank you. Uh, one more question. You know, going back on the, the senior program, instead of the senior shuttle, is there any opportunity to keep the senior center open longer instead of it closing at 2:00? Like surrounding areas, they close at 5:00?
I think that's something we could look into.
Because I think we had talked to some staff and I think it was going to cost about maybe $150,000 to $200,000 for extended hours. One of the things that I spoke to a lot of seniors with is, you know, it starts at 8:00 or 9:00, I believe, and it ends at 2:00. And they say it's a little too early compared to other towns, uh, surrounding us. One of the biggest concern was, you know, could we want to stay here longer or have it be open, or be more accessible for longer hours?
Sure, I think that's something we could certainly look into, the, the hours.
Or maybe if we could try to get a cost analysis on keeping it open on a yearly basis, what, you know, would it be the $200,000 that's estimated or 250 or whatever the amount is?
Right, I, I think we do have staff there until a, a little bit after the senior center closes. Um, I know, I think the idea behind the closing time at 2:00 o'clock was to provide some time for the staff to be able to get to some work that they're not able to get to while the center's open and very busy. Um, so I think that was the original intention of it, but I know that the senior center's now been open for quite some time and I think we can certainly, um, revisit the hours of operation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, just to clarify, we are voting on the original, uh, motion that was seconded for a budget, uh, transfer within the city's, um, general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025 in the amount of $4,500,000 as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget, Develop and Oversight. Therefore, all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any, um, abstentions? We'll do a roll call.
Alderman Elsa?
No.
Alderman Dorso? Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Newjane?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Okay, we got five yes, one no.
Therefore, the motion passes. The Standing Committee, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of...
Hold on one second, uh, just let's get Alderman Mosley back in here.
Yep. He's good, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, I'm going to read that, I'll read that again. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $22,873.98 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion? A second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Lead and Healthy Homes Professional Services Contract for Waterbury Lead and Healthy Homes between the City of Waterbury and Ada Romero, owner of 32 Wildwood Ave, in the amount of $64,850, as submitted by Francis Ford, Manager, Health Department. Can I get a motion?
64.
$64,850.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment One to the Engineer Agreement for Raze Project Component Two Engineering Services between the City of Waterbury and Luke's Consulting Engineers LLC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, Department of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four is from the Department of Ed. This item and the additional items from the Department of Ed were approved at their last regular meeting. Item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a grant agreement with Ready CT for funding for a first robotics program in the amount of $10,847, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a services agreement under RFP number 8444 with Zello Inc. for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $179,552.88, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a college readiness and success agreement, CB-00038979, with College Board in the not-to-exceed amount of $60,928, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a professional services agreement under RFP number 8127 with Teaching Strategies LLC for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $215,059.20, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a services agreement under RFP number 8520 with Jackie Carroll Staffing Services Inc. for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $765,000, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me. How are you?
Good evening. Eugene Fazepola, Board of Education, HR Office.
Thank you for coming. So to my understanding from what I read here, this is a three-year period for $765,000, so it's about $255,000 per year, correct?
Correct.
What is the average that we spend now within the past three years?
I certainly can get that breakdown for you. It's done on a per-department basis, even within the Board of Education. We set up for cost control purposes, individualized purchase orders. So I can get you a printout for the whole Board of Alderman of those exact transactions, if you'd like.
All right, so for tonight, for the vote, though, like if I was to vote yes to this, where did the number come from then? Did it come from historical numbers? Does it have an inflation to it to accommodate a shortage that we have that's more than the past years?
So the past presidential election does bump up the number. This is, I should share, a collaboration between the City of Waterbury on the city side as well as the Board of Education side. So we went out to RFP together as a collaboration. The numbers that are indicated are a not-to-exceed number based on historical information, as you indicated.
And so is this number both for city and Board of Education or just for the Board of Ed or the education?
No. It's a combined not-to-exceed number for all of us, all the individual departments together.
Okay. And what roles and positions does this fill from Jackie Carroll? Because I know we have, I think it's DSS, maybe, or ESS, that does our, sorry if I'm saying it wrong, but does our substitute teaching.
So these are more clerk types of roles. For example, we have one, I'll use ours as an example, within the Human Capital Office at the Board of Education. She supports ESS. ESS is a separate vendor in a separate contract, which you had before you a few weeks ago. Clerk roles, support roles, for example, when a ramp-up has to happen on the municipal side for elections, those types of support roles. We're able to ask Jackie Carroll for supplemental staffing with people who are knowledgeable of the City of Waterbury, who, this provides local citizens an opportunity to join on a temporary basis with the City of Waterbury.
Okay, thank you. I think I have a question for you, Sarah Gary, if you don't mind, and it's, what's the estimated ratio of this for city versus our education department?
Sure. Sarah Gary, Manager, Budget Development and Oversight. I believe it's more, so more of the funding is spent on the education side. On the general government side, on the last couple of years, I know the Register of Voters Office had used it at one point, I believe their admin position was vacant, so it was a temp that was used on a longer-term basis. And then we had the inspections Department that used it over the last year or so for their permanent technician positions. Those were vacant and while the position was posted and being recruited for and tested, they used Jackie Carroll temps. But I believe the majority of the funding is on the education side, but the contract allows for both sides, education and general government, to use it. On the general government side, the departments would need to get a purchase order before using the Jackie Carroll services. And typically, the funding is available because they have a vacant position. That would be why they would be using Jackie Carroll services. So if a department has a vacant admin one position and there's no list in place and the whole recruiting and testing process has to take place, that could take, you know, a significant period of time and they'd like to have somebody fill the role in that timeframe where it's vacant before they can pick somebody for the permanent position off the list, they would get the purchase order to Jackie Carroll, but the funding would be available because that position was funded and it's vacant. So they're basically using that funding for the position. But each department needs a purchase order before they go and utilize the services. And as Jean had mentioned, it's a not-to-exceed amount over the three-year time period. So, you know, we may end up spending less than that amount. It all depends on which departments need temporary staffing services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Hi. I got a few questions. How much is, compared to the person that is in full-time, to the staffing? Is there's a range of pricing on it? Or do they get paid the same as the union worker?
Again, I'll speak from our personal experience within our office. That is not the case. It's an hourly rate. And again, I can get you the definite numbers, but it's significantly less for the temp service than it is. So it's not a one-for-one. So if I were serving as the clerk in a posted position, that salary is not what is offered to the temp service.
My second question is, how long they will be there, serving as a temporary, to become a full employee?
Certainly, we encourage if we find, and we've had this in our special education office, where a Jackie Carroll temp services worker was in a position, they're encouraged if they see a position available to apply, go through the formal, either the civil service side or through our hiring process. And so they are given full consideration. It's obviously, as in any temp situation, they have an opportunity to be seen in doing the role as well as they get the chance to see our organization. So it's really a win-win for everybody involved.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on item number 13? Alderwoman Weaver?
Thank you. As far as the contract, is there an amount of time they have to work before they can be considered?
That's a great question. I will certainly double-check that, but I don't believe that to be the case. They can certainly be hired if they see a full-time opportunity. We've had historically a great working relationship with Jackie Carroll. I do know that some temp agencies, so they don't lose their best workers, but they have been supportive of us as a Waterbury, and that's one of the reasons they were the low-cost bidder on this. But one of the reasons that they were selected is because of that working relationship and their ability to find quality Waterbury citizens to fill roles and give opportunities to.
So then they would waive their time? I know prior, that there was like a 90-day or six months that you had to wait until you hired the person.
I will certainly take that as a takeaway and get you that answer through the appropriate office.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 13? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 14. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the agreement with Ben Haven Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,110,573.36, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me. How are you?
Good evening. Wendy John, Director of People's Services.
Thank you for coming. How many students does this program, or does this program with Ben Haven serve?
Currently, we have seven students attending.
I'm not quite sure if this is the same one we previously spoke about when we approved.
It is. And you can see from the attached, it was approved of Board of Alderman May 19th. However, there were significant revisions made to the contract. We had some back-and-forth negotiations. So we're back in front of you with a different contract.
Sure. And can you help me understand what the changes were, what some of the challenges were?
Some of the challenges were some of the agreement language. We also are getting a model contract from the state, so we backed off to a one-year agreement so that we can get the proposed language from CSTE, from the Connecticut State Department of Education, so that we can use some of that verbiage. So we're in hopes to be able to get some of that verbiage in our new contract.
Okay. And so it's 1.1 million for one year?
Correct.
I see it one-year term.
Yes. And the rate sheet should be attached. Alderwoman?
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 14? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask one more question, just for clarity to the group or to the public, if you can just answer one more question for me, I apologize. The state, this is a state mandated, just to help the public understand special education, like we are mandated to have, help me fill in the verbiage here, like specific services that help our students who need special education, correct?
Correct. All students are obligated to have an educational placement if they have an individualized education plan. And we are obligated in the City of Waterbury to educate them. If we're not able to meet their needs in the City of Waterbury, in Waterbury Public Schools, we have to provide them a placement. And this is an approved special education private school in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item 14 was approved. Moving on to item 15. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the master subscription agreement with MHC Software Holdings Inc. for access to the software suite for the North Star project. The subscription cost is $29,951 a year for a 60-month term with an additional one-time onboarding fee of $17,850, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 16 has been tabled. Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the construction contract for the Woodlawn Terrace Sewer Separation Project between the City of Waterbury and Colona Masonry Concrete and Asphalt Pavings LLC in the amount of $190,920, as submitted by Thomas F. Crowe Jr., PE, Civil Engineer II Engineering Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the agreement between the City of Waterbury and Granicus LLC for the FOIA Municipal Data and Records Request Data Management System. The total cost for the initial three-year period is $105,963.1, as submitted by Dan Iopero, Director of Information Technology. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Good evening, Alderman. Dan Foster from the Legal Department.
How you doing? Since we, you know, we got this at last minute, I just want to know what this entitle for the IT department, what the project will be.
Patients or things like that.
Got it, got it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Any further discussion on item number 18? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you. What did we, is this brand-new?
No. New company name, but GovQA is the same software.
Okay.
That the city's had for, I forget, five or eight years.
And that was going to be my question, if we used, who we used in the past. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 18? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 19. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Home Loan Assistance Agreement with Lazarus Project LLC for the redevelopment of 693 East Main Street, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Good evening. Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. And I also have with me this evening, Michael Buckley, the Director of Housing for the Community Development Programs. And we also have with us Attorney Parris to address any questions that you may have in regards to the Deferred Loan Assistance Agreement.
Okay. My first question is, this property is next to the Sacred Heart Church, right?
That's correct.
So for what I hear, from what I see here, we are going to put more homeless people in this property too, right?
The property, the developer, Lazarus, where Ralph Monte is a principal, their proposed use of the developed property is for transitional housing.
Yeah, because this says right here, on first floor will be used, approximately 2,000 square feet of the rear of this first floor will be served as hospitality suite for the homeless, providing, you know, laundry and all that.
That's correct.
But didn't we were going to use the church for that?
This was a project that came about more than two years ago at this point via the requested application submitted by Lazarus to community development through the mayor's office, requesting an allocation of the city's home funds for the development of this site.
Yeah, but my biggest concern is here that now we're going to use two properties for kind of the same aspect for it. And homeowners around that area, the value of their property is going to go down significantly. If we could, you know, we're using the same area. It's like not even half a block from each other.
So as was mentioned, the application came in through Lazarus, Ralph Monte. The proposal is to develop the property. Monti, the proposal is to develop the property, it's a property that formerly had burned.
Yeah, exactly, I know which one it is.
It was demolished, condemned, and then demolished, and the proposal is to develop the property for 22 units, five of which will be for very low-income individuals, and then the remaining 17 for low-income residents. And to your point, there is a hospitality center that's part of the development, the proposed development plan.
Yeah, I'm not against to build more things like this to help the community, but now we're building in that specific area, we're overcrowding homeowners there too.
So just to put it in context, as Mike said, that building had been there before, it housed the Center for Human Development previously, which had the area where you could come in, take a shower, wash your clothes, potentially use a computer. It burned, the CHD is currently now across the street from where Sacred Heart is, and it's an undersized facility, it's not providing quite the same services. This would go back even, in the end with, with Sacred Heart, and we're continuing to work with the providers and with United Way to see the best way to deal with the church as far as addressing the needs of the homeless would most likely be to provide, you know, the service, or provide people who could help point to services and other things, but the clothes washing, the showering, and all of that is not part of what's anticipated to be at the Sacred Heart building, so that would continue to be there. But one of the reasons when we proposed acquiring Sacred Heart and doing those things in that area is because you had those things there already. The Center for Human Development is there, there's a homeless population that's there to be served, so the idea was to try to serve them and move them along, and this housing that's going to be part of it is transitional housing, so it is where you're trying to get people who are otherwise homeless into some housing, get some training and skills, and then move them back on again, and that's partially what's been going on across the street as well, right next to the soup kitchen, and the Gwim Soup Kitchen is right there, so you've got all of these services in the area right now, so we're not adding to it, we're simply moving it back to where it had been prior to the fire.
Well, but yeah, but, so why are the plans that we're going to have in Sacred Heart, because I know the school, we're going to utilize it for the same thing of, you know, transition from one thing to another.
Well, that would have the training facilities, the school would be primarily devoted to, like, places where you could go get trained skills in, in the trades and such, working with Northwest Redevelopment or Employment Agency, and also, you know, just some skills to come back. Potentially, there might be, you know, the ability to put some transitional housing in there as well. The need is for transitional housing, so, and then the church itself would be used as a place, I'm envisioning now, it's not going to be a shelter, I think the, the idea of putting a full-time shelter in there and talking to providers probably doesn't make a lot of sense, but what they need is someplace where people can go to hook up with people who can help them get services and the rest of it, so it wouldn't be meeting the needs that, that center, hospitality center would be meeting, which is a place to go. One of the problems if you're homeless is, there really is no place to wash your clothes, no place to take a shower and do those things. That would still continue to be there, and that is not part of, any part of what's anticipated right now in going into Sacred Heart.
Okay, and we're talking about $3.7 million, we're given a loan, forgivable, so if they continue the work of what we plan, they'll, they don't have to pay that money back?
Right, that's, that's, those are the parameters of the home program, which is the federal dollars, and the city is a pass-through for that, so those are the, the parameters that are set by the federal government and how those projects work. The idea is to put it through, what, what's the timeline on the, 20 years, so it would decline over time, and at the end of 20 years, it would be a fully forgiven, forgiven loan.
You know, my, like I said before, I'm not against more housing, but in that area, I don't think we should be able to be putting more, more of the same, talking about, you know, we have a church, a Sacred Heart Church, that's kind of used for...
It will be utilized ultimately for homeless services, I don't agree with you.
Yeah, and then, you know, the homeowners there, they, they might be concerned of using the same area for both, the same areas for the same thing. I would have been concerned if I would have lived there, so, you know, can we utilize for other things, but I don't think we should be doing the same thing for both areas.
I, I understand where your concern comes from, a couple of things I would just point out is, you know, as you move these things farther away from each other, though, the, the ability to access all of the services becomes harder, because now you have homeless people going to all different parts of the city, so it's an issue for them, it becomes an issue for the neighborhoods. The reason that Sacred Heart, this, by the way, CHD was there for years before the fire, so this is not a new thing. This is really, if you go there, there's a hole in the ground now where the building had been, the fire was a number of years ago, it took a while to work through these bureaucratic processes, particularly with the federal government, to get there. This is simply replacing what burned, the owner who owned it before is replacing what burned there, but the, the other side to this is that the population is there, the homeless, we're not bringing a homeless population to this area, the homeless population is there currently, there are people camping in that area and the rest, and so this is to try to help provide services and an ability for them to get what they need so that we can hopefully begin to transition them on. That's what the bulk of this building will be, it's transitional housing for people who have, who have, in many cases, significant problems. I do, you know, that is part of the program, many of them are dual-diagnosed, so they have both mental, mental illness and drug or alcohol problems on top of, very hard to house people and to transition them from homelessness into housing, that's what this is designed to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, I just have two clarifying questions, too. This, this property right now, it's essentially a crater with a fence around it, correct? That's the one on the corner?
Yeah, because after the fire, it had all been demolished and brought out, so it's Billy, it's a hole with a fence around it, it's on the corner, right.
So this is, this is going to be putting a building, obviously, in that spot, but I, I think it's worth noting that if we're concerned about the number of people there, this would reduce the number of homeless people by 22, right? Every, per transition, so they're there for a period of time until they're stable enough to find other secure housing, so this, this actually reduces the number of homeless folks in the area, not increases, right? They're not, they're not incentivized to, to come.
Right, the idea is to provide them with the ability to move from homelessness into shelter, right? And this is the, that's why it's transitional, they're not intended to be there for the long term, and so, yes, that's the idea, is to start addressing it, and it is where, you know, there is, I cannot say that it's not another place in the city as well, but we do know that right there, between the soup kitchen, CHD, which had been there and now is across the street, there's a concentration there now that this, the population that this would be designed to serve.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion on item number 19? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, two years ago, I think it was, we voted on Sacred Heart, and a majority of you approved it, and the church was supposed to be a homeless shelter, so that's fine, it was what it was. We had a very long conversation about doing a poll in the area with the business owner, with the business owners, with the homeowners, to gather some input from the community. Do we have that feedback?
No.
I'm only asking this because I've had people come to me, and it's not even my district, but like, I know that there's other, been some other feedback from homeowners in the area where the unknown is frightening, right? So, we bought Sacred Heart, we're going to make the school a training and reentry center, we have like a halfway, I guess Renaissance is like a halfway home program, and then we're going to create the homeless shelter on the, at the church, all in one block, and now we're talking about building housing, and I'd really like to kind of, I'm all for helping the homeless, taking people into my home, I go to the soup kitchen, yada, yada, but I think we need to have a plan in order to reach out to the community around it, to be able to explain to people what's going on, get some other feedback, and incorporate it to the development that's going to happen, because I, I would like to see housing for them. However, we do have this feedback and this concern that's happening in the neighborhood.
I do want to reiterate with this building, that this is not as if it didn't exist before, and this is just getting built there for the first time. There was a building there with transitional housing in the hospitality center.
Right.
That existed, it burned down.
Yes.
And now it is being replaced, so it's not a new use for that lot, it's, we're putting back what had been there previously to continue working that out. With the building gone, it created some issues on the transitional housing, I think there was a couple of units across the street that were being used that way, and then the hospitality center did move also down the block and on the other side there, and that will no longer be the, you know, they'll, they'll move back to where they were, but I don't believe in the current center they have sufficient showers, I don't even know if they have showers there or the washing and drying facilities.
I agree with you, it's small.
So we're putting it, we're just replacing what was there, this is not a new use in that neighborhood, and that was, you know, again, that is part of what drove the Sacred Heart concept, is that it was in the middle of where these services are, it kind of makes sense, I think, to put it there. The halfway house is already up at the convent, it's just now going to be with the rectory, it's a, it's an extension, but frees up Central Avenue, and they're in the process of trying to sell that building, and I think they're making some progress. Some of this municipal redevelopment money that's coming along may become helpful in that, to, to make that more attractive to a developer to convert it over, because it does take some, there's a cost to convert what's effectively a halfway house into usable apartments that would be affordable housing down on Central Avenue, so, but that is in the works. The other pieces of it have been made just a little bit more difficult because of some of the changes in, in federal funding and what the priorities are coming out of the federal government, that at the beginning of 2024, you know, wasn't the case, but post-election it had, there have been some changes, so we're working, trying to figure out ways to, to, you know, deal with that and continue going down that route. We do continue to have conversations with United Way and some of the providers about what the best use of the church is, and some ways that we can, you know, access the funding. So some of the money, the seed money that was going to come for the reentry center, because of the issues with the federal budget and some things that just haven't happened, that money has not been made available, so those pieces haven't been able to fall into place, so it's, it's not an excuse, it's an explanation of where we are with it, so...
Thank you.
But I just want to, I want to make very clear that this is not a brand-new use of that corner.
Right.
That's, this is what it was, and the plan had always been, as I understand it, to put it back to its prior use.
But the new layer to that is, we bought the property of Sacred Heart, where people moved to be close to a church and close to a school, and now they're going to be close to a prison reentry, a homeless shelter.
Don't forget, that's already there, though. The, the convent has been that halfway house for returning.
Right, one out of four buildings, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's been there, and I would bet, until we talked about redoing this project, nobody even knew it was there, and I think it'd have the same effect with the, with the rectory there, so, but I, I get it, I'm not, I understand where you're coming from, but...
I would like to make a motion to table this item, so we have more community input. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
So a motion to table has been made and seconded, can I get a roll call?
Yeah, one moment. No, okay, I'm sorry, leave me a good talk. Okay, Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay, she said no also?
She said yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, have her rule.
Okay, all right, so we, Alderman Taldene? I did, didn't I?
Yep.
Yeah, so we have, we have six and two. I'm missing the count of five and two.
Three and two.
Yeah, I'm sorry, three yes, two no.
So the motion to table has failed, which returns us to the original motion of approval of item number 19. Any further discussion on item number 19? Alderman Rodriguez.
What's the timeframe of transition for this, for each person that is going to be there? Do you have a transition time, or?
I don't, there's not a solid timeline, it's, when you get in there, they'll be working with you to transition you back out, but it's not like you have to be out three months, six months, anything like that. So it's going to vary from person to person because of the needs of the individual people who will end up in there, and, and also, keep in mind, the, you know, there's also a housing issue generally, where there's not a lot of empty units to try to transition people into. One of the issues they're having, especially even in the homeless shelters, is this idea that where at one point, especially with families, you could get a voucher, and within three months, you could move a family out of the homeless shelter. Today, it's taking nine months or longer before you can find an available, suitable apartment, so those are the issues you're going to face, so it's hard to put, I think, a hard and fast timeline on that.
And my biggest concern about this is, I get it, that building was there, it was utilized for that same purpose, and now, you know, we're using another area half a block from it, for almost the same thing, kind of similar situation, and it's just concerning to me that, you know, the people in that area.
I'm sorry, the, the, the housing, I may have misspoken on this, I call it the transitional, but it's really for people who might otherwise be at risk of homelessness, to, to help them avoid becoming homeless.
Okay.
So that's, but it's the same concept, so that you're not, you know, still 22 people who won't be part of the homeless population as a result of this building being there.
But this right here says that it's a transitional...
Yeah, they're at risk of being homeless, so they'll go in there and transition until they can get into more permanent housing. This is not meant to be permanent housing for them, so it's people who might otherwise be at risk of becoming homeless. There may be people who are couch surfing at this point, or, you know, are going to, in the, in the process of losing their homes, things along those lines, so this would be housing to help them until they can transition into more permanent housing.
But if I, when I'm, what I'm reading here, it says, it will be 22 single-room occupancy, so we...
It's not for families, it's for people who have...
It's for, only for people that are, but do we have people that are single person, you know, losing their homes like that?
You're going to have people because of the nature of the individuals involved, in many cases, in most cases are dual-diagnosed, so they have substance abuse issues, they may have mental illness issues and other things that they're struggling with, and that's what this housing would be designed for, who would otherwise become part of a homeless population and be living on the streets, and this is designed to keep that from happening.
My other question is, is this only going to be for Waterbury residents, or it's going to be for people around surrounding areas, to bring people to this place?
I don't, I mean, I think it's generally going to be for people who live in the Waterbury area who are going to be searching for it, but I don't know that you can, I don't think you can just write that off, that you can't bring people from somewhere else. For Waterbury, yeah, generally it would be addressing Waterbury people because of the nature of the way it works.
And, and I, I come to this is because, you know, we, if we're going to be starting bringing people from all over the Connecticut, and we're going to leave our people, then, you know, we're stuck in the same thing, so we're just piling in the same mud, you know, we, if we're going to utilize this place for something, let's use people from Waterbury first.
That's, that's going to be the nature of the way it's going to work, I think, you're just going to find it's going to come out that way, that it's going to be for people who are here and already, you know, working with people to try to avoid becoming homeless.
So, and this is why my colleague wanted to table this, because we don't have the set things that are you guys want for, for this, for utilizing this, you know, we don't, we haven't heard from, people around surrounding the area, homeowners, we don't know about if it's going to be used for Waterbury residents only, you know, you get what I'm saying, it only says that we're giving you guys $3.7 million, but how about if, when you guys build all this stuff and start bringing people from all over the place, from different areas, it's not in the, in the contract? You know what I'm saying? So, that's what my concern is, that if we start bringing people from all the towns to this area, then we have the people from Waterbury staying the same way.
But you would not be able to put into a program that the federal government is funding, that you could only directly deal with people from Waterbury, it wouldn't be able to do that.
And that's my concern.
But I think the nature of the kind of program that it is dealing with, it's going to be people from Waterbury are going to be the ones, there's, there's plenty of people...
He's not guaranteed, though.
Well, you can't guarantee it if you're going to do it with federal dollars, so that's going to be the case.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, certainly, I think, too, there's, I think there's something ironic about asking about a residency requirement for the homeless population. You're asking if they are from Waterbury, they've lost their home, so where they're from, I think, is almost immaterial, they're not, they're not from a, a particular city, right? And at the same time, there's a challenge where you're, the folks who are going to get referred to this program according to the documents of Forest are also associated with some of the workforce development programs in the city, so those, these are people who have lost, and homeless doesn't mean they've lost a single-family home, they could, they could have been priced out of their apartments, their buildings could have been bought and sold underneath them, and then they've been evicted, so there are people who have lost their housing, right, not just... evicted. So there are people who have lost their housing, right? Not just single-family homes, but who have engaged with a workforce development program in the city that are trying to prevent further issues by living on the streets, which a homeless shelter, you can't live at a homeless shelter. That's a temporary overnight stay. So having a homeless shelter on the other side of the block doesn't reduce the number of homeless people. It reduces the number of people on the street. So I think we're comparing things that don't really mesh together. The goal of this is to get people off the street into a stable, clean living situation, paired with a workforce training program for a period of time that they're ready to get their own apartment. The fact that it's close to the Sacred Heart property, that it's going to be a homeless shelter, which would be for overnight stays, doesn't reduce the number of people that are living on the streets around the neighborhood. It puts them into a place off the street. So I, I think we've meshed two ideas that are not related to this, you know, the Sacred Heart project is not related necessarily to this project, but does reduce the number of unhoused people living near the area.
No, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And to, to you is, yeah, I get it. I get your point. But I get, you have to get my point, too, that if we're going to be utilizing, and the city's going to put, put in $3.7 million, that the residents of Waterbury that pay this money will be the first to come and use this kind of money for it.
Just for the record, again, it's, the $3.7 million is federal dollars. It's just a pass-through through the city of Waterbury. So that home money has to be used in accordance with the home guidelines, which is what's happening. But it's not city money, and it's not as if that money could otherwise be used for like operating costs or anything in the city. It's a particular program to do this kind of housing, and it's a pass-through to get that done. Just, I want to be clear. It's federal dollars, which is a lot of what drives the requirements and also the issue of whether you can put a hard and fast rule that only Waterbury residents can be there. And I, you know, without parsing this too finely, I would imagine that once you're there, if you're in the city, I don't, you know, how do you figure out the residency? Homeless people who are here, they're living here, or they're about to be living on the streets here, you know, I, I'm not sure, you know, how you would figure that out in this case. But, but the point I just want to make is it's not Waterbury dollars. They're federal dollars, and the city is passing it through to address certain needs that exist in the city. And I think we can all agree that, you know, housing for people in this circumstance is something that's needed. We don't have enough of it, and this would just, you know, enhance that, so.
And the $750,000 from the Waterbury Housing Fund. That's Waterbury? There's $750,000.
No, I'm sorry. It's also federal funds. It's just coming through a different agency as opposed to directly through the city of Waterbury.
So the total price for this project is $4.8 million?
That's correct. When you add in the Hospitality Center, which is the component that is going to be funded by the developer.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Certainly. Any further discussion on item number 19? Alderman Hunter.
Yes, I think before, prior to this building being burned down, it was highly.
Of course.
Worked out for everyone. It is a perfect location. And when this building prior being burned down, it was very effective. People went there, and I think after we, it's built again, I think it wouldn't affect that neighborhood. I think it would bring more in. And I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this because I think this is something we need. It was effective before, and I think it's going to be effective again. The same building that burned down prior. And I think Mr. Ralph Monte for just being a visionary to build this building over again.
Alderman Weaver?
I know Kelly was concerned about the neighbors and how they felt about it. I think the other thing that you have to look at is there's a lot of homelessness around that area. In the morning at 7 o'clock, that's all you see. They're out there indoors and things like that. This project will help to get some of those people off the street. And that's what the purpose of it is.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman, to be fair.
Thank you for recognizing me. So I don't think there's any argument in the vision or the help that it's going to give the area. And it's not so much for the feelings, it's just business, business management in the area, and we're increasing the taxes, but yet we're changing the landscape of the area for some of the residents that have been there for a period of time and have invested in the city and given back to the city through their taxes. How did Lazarus LLC get awarded this project? Was there an RFP that went out? Were they chosen out of a group of companies? How did that work?
They had submitted an application. As customarily has been done, it's not so much the city reaching out from an RFP standpoint as it is these housing development agencies that approach the city with a request for an allocation of funds through the home program. There, another one I can reference you to is for the Adams Street redevelopment. That came through with a request for funding from Neighborhood Housing, which is now Nest. And over the years, there's been other development agencies that, Neighbor Works New Horizons as an example. And these agencies are aware of the fact that the city gets allocated a, a set amount of funds on an annual basis from the federal government through its home program. And what we do when these allocations come forward is evaluate the availability of funding that we have in place. And then ultimately, through the administration, determination is made in regards to requesting an award of funds, which is before you this evening. We do have the funding in place. There's been a number of years of allotments that have been accumulated through the home program, particularly COVID essentially sent sideways any potential developments during that period of time. And it would, this is an opportunity to really commit and spend down a good portion of the available home funds that the city has.
Thank you. And I commend Lazarus on what they do. I've, I've read about your company, so thank you for what you do. We appreciate it. The timeline for this project, we said, is still up in the air, correct?
Per revision.
Yes, or, I guess, what is the timeline so far? What do we have?
The, we received five.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you spoke yet, sir. Just, yeah, name it, name it.
Michael Buckley. I'm the Director of Housing Assistance Programs with the Office of Community Development here in Waterbury. And of the five proposals we've received, they all ballpark about 12 months to complete the project.
12 months. Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to make a motion to table this until we know what our Sacred Heart timeline is. And then we can go off of the timeline of what you're doing, and I still think that we should talk to the public, but we already voted on that. So I'm looking for a second.
I don't know if, if a motion to table has already failed, if you can make two on the same item.
All right, through you, Mr. President. Alderman Rodriguez, would you like to make the motion?
I'll make a, I'll second it, but I want to go through the president.
Sure. Different person wants to table it, I guess, call them. Yep, go ahead.
Motion to table? Oh, motion being made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote?
Alderman Hunter?
No.
We have Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Taldean.
No.
All the woman Weaver.
No.
All the woman Zimmerman.
Yes.
And we got three no, two yes.
The motion to table has failed. We return to the original item, which is approval, or the original motion, which is approving item number 19. Are there, are there more questions that have not been asked? Alderman Rodriguez?
Look, isn't, I'm not against building this because this, I know it helps the community. My concern is two buildings doing the same thing next to each other. That's my biggest concern here. It's not just, we get it. We need more of these things going through the city, but we don't know what's going to happen with Sacred Heart yet, and we have something being created. You know, thank you for what you guys are doing, but I think my biggest concern is two of the same things and concern about the citizens in that area. And we don't have not even a, you know, anything to, for the residents to even know. Like my colleagues are saying over here, yeah, it was a great, great thing when, when he was there, but I'm not talking about that. I'm, my concern is that two places being next to each other.
I just want to point out, whatever happens at Sacred Heart is not going to be the same as what's going. This is 22 units of transitional housing to keep people off the street. That is not what's envisioned or what's going to happen at Sacred Heart, at the church. It's not what's happening at the rectory building, and it's not what's happening at the reentry center that's there. So it's not the same thing. It is all, to some degree, dealing with homeless people who are in the area, but they're not providing the same services. So just, just to be clear, it is all involving homeless people who are in the area to be served, but not the same. They're not duplicative services that are being provided.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I think at this point, I'd like to call the vote on item number 19.
Do you have one comment, Mr. Chairman? And I would like to put into the record.
Sure.
I'd just like to put a comment into the record that I care very much about this side of the city and homeless, but I do believe that for me to vote yes on this, I would need a more concrete plan and timing. So I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Of course. So I call the vote on item number 19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call vote?
How many times? Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Nay.
Alderman Taldean?
Yes.
All the woman Weaver?
Yes.
All the woman Zimmerman?
No.
Two no, three yes.
So the motion passes. Thank you. And on to the last item. Item number 20. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve FY '26 Child Passenger Safety Grant in the amount of $223,117.45. This grant does not require a match, as submitted by Lieutenant Andrea DiAgostino, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I'll entrain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. Item number one is on consent to approve. Item number two is receiving place on file. Item number three is on consent to approve. Item four is on consent to approve, uh, excuse me, yes. Item four is on consent to approve. Item five is receiving place on file. Item six is received, receiving place on file. Item number seven is on consent to approve. Item eight, not, items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 are on consent to approve. Items 13, 14, 15 are on consent to approve. Item 16 has been tabled. Items 17 and 18 are on consent to approve, and item 19, and item number 20 are on consent to approve. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Weaver?
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any additions or deletions from the consent calendar? Alderman Alsaf?
I'd like to ask that item seven be removed from the consent calendar.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Um, I would like to ask that item number 19 be removed from the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Dorso. Motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar as read, minus item number seven and item 19. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second? Alderman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All is in favor of approving the consent calendar as read, minus number seven and 19. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Guys have it. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved with respect to item number seven. The chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee. And please make note on this vote that Alderman Mosley once again refused himself from the vote. Alderman Salvio.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a transfer of, a budget transfer within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, in the amount of $4,050,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight.
Motion to approve the transfer.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Let's just recess for one second until Alderman Rinaldi comes back. I did not realize he was not here, so.
You want discussion? Is that what you said?
Yeah, okay. Well, I want to wait for Rinaldi to come back. Just recess one moment. motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Alderman Alsaf?
Yes. I, I won't be supporting a yes vote on this simply because of my sense of responsibility, just the overall general statements of how this money's going to be spent. Several of them are very necessary, very needed, and very wonderful. Several, several of them leave a lot of questions in my mind, and just because of that, I can't support it. And I understand we'll have another crack at it as they come up individually, but at this point, I have to say no because I don't have the information I need to make real good decisions.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Oh, excuse me. Alderman Rodriguez.
I have a question. If that's where I hear that.
Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight.
Thank you. My question is, the community improvement activities, the $150,000, it goes to different groups, community groups. Do we have an idea who are taking this, or are we going to get that back to who we're going to be giving that money to?
So you could see in the transfer that it does mention it would assist in funding quality of life improvements in the city. This isn't just funding that just solely goes to community groups. It may be used by the city for quality of life improvements. There are also some city-sponsored, city-run events that this funding could go to. And it does sometimes assist smaller community group activities, as the mayor mentioned to Alderman Alsaf earlier tonight.
Okay. So we, it doesn't mean that it's going to go to different groups in the nonprofits and stuff like that. It's just utilized for?
It can, but that's not the sole purpose of it. It can also be used for some city expenses that are related to improving the quality of life in our various neighborhoods.
And we will have that, if, if it goes to any of those groups, it will be sent to us first before approval?
If, if it required a contract that required your approval, it would come before the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me. To Alderman Alsaf's point, it's just hard when we're, we're making a vote on something that goes from sidewalks to $150,000 for IT, to some Department of Public Works miscellaneous improvements, to economic development efforts. So if next time in the future, we can kind of break those out, I think it'd be easier for us to vote. But I'd also like to, I guess, make a mo, tonight's make a motion night. I'd like to make a motion to table this because I think we were waiting for the senior center comment that Alderman Newjane brought up, and the possibility of using the shuttle funds for the senior center instead, which I would love to see because they are in dire need of funds, which they've expressed. So I, I guess I'm.
So motion on the floor to table. Is there a second?
To be seconded.
Can I address the question about the senior?
Uh, not once she tables it. No, no discussion. Not once she tables it. No, no discussion on that part, and then we'll go right back. We're going to get right back to that, so.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion on the floor to table, and there's a second. Roll call, please. Alderman Alsop?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
No.
Alderman Hunter?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Newjane?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
No.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
No.
Alderman Taladine?
No.
Alderwoman Weaver?
No.
Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Alderman DiGio Vincarlo?
No.
Eight no, four yes. Okay. The ayes have it. The motion to table fails, and we are back on the original motion, item number seven. Further discussion?
I think Sarah was going to-
Did you want to announce?
Just wanted to make it clear on the senior shuttle program, the transfer that's part of this budget transfers for $200,000 for that specific program, for the senior shuttle program. I know Alderman Newjane did bring up the issue of the hours of the senior center. I think we'd certainly be open to having a discussion with the senior center. I'm not sure that it necessarily needs a ton of additional funding. Like I said earlier, we do have employees that work past the hours that the center closes. When we first opened, I know the original intention was for them to have some time when things were a little bit quieter because they're very busy during the hours that they're open to the public, so provide them some more maybe quiet time to get to some of their daily duties, administrative work. But we could certainly talk to them, and if it required additional funding, it might be something the senior center can put into their budget request for next year, but I don't know that it would require $200,000. This specific transfer, though, is for the senior shuttle program, which we have a contract with a vendor who runs the transportation program.
May I?
Yeah, we're back on that, back on discussion.
For the senior shuttle, there was, in the budget, it almost quadrupled, correct? It went from like $246,000 to $446,000, or something?
In the fiscal year '26 budget, we included a contribution of $300,000 to the senior shuttle program. It also does receive a smaller amount of CDVG funding. We have seen the usage go up quite a bit. I think it had died down during the COVID years, and it's really back up and running, and currently we're receiving bills of about 30 through the end of fiscal year '26 based on the activity we're seeing right now. So that's why we included this transfer, but it would also hopefully last us a little bit into fiscal year '27.
Do we feel that we would be short this year if this was not transferred, and what is our plan if we are short?
I think you'll, I think you'll, activity will die down a little bit, but we're hoping this provides some funding into next year so that maybe we can keep that general fund contribution stable at around $300,000.
I just feel like this kind of falls victim because it's mixed in with other programs that we may have some conflicting ideas on, but thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Alderman Alsop?
This isn't just for you, Sarah. This is for everybody. I think in order to make this a little more palatable, a little easier to take, because obviously the votes are not here for us to say no all the time, I would like to recommend that at this point we take the time to form a committee, a bipartisan committee of equal numbers, to review some of these things, such as the surplus spending and stuff. That we all sit down and look at it, decide on where these monies could go by the suggestions made, and then we can come back to the taxpayers and say it was, you know, each item was reviewed, we looked at it, we all feel good about it, we could vote about it. Rather than have it come in here some night and, you know, either get dropped on our desk 10 minutes before the meeting, or have some, something come along that we don't understand that well, we put some people in charge of actually looking at this and saying, okay, we've got this money. It wasn't allocated yet. Let's sit down and work together and find a way to spend this in a way that everybody can agree to, or at least more of us can agree to. I mean, I think that takes the burden off people we pay to do this anyways, but I'm willing to put the time in to sit down and learn about these things and either support it or be against it, depending on how well it's sold and what it is. Several of these items, as I said before, are worthy, but the ambiguity, ambiguity, that big word, has me a little bit concerned as to where it's going to go from here. You know, how much control are we going to have when we get handed a contract at the last minute that's already been decided in most cases? I think it's important that we're there, if we're there to help develop everything, it's a better situation. And it's not a control thing. It's a cooperative thing, as far as I'm concerned.
So I'll just, we'll take it into consideration for next year.
I would appreciate, I wouldn't say this year. I mean-
I just, it wasn't, it wasn't dropped on your desk 10 minutes. You had it since the agenda came out.
I understand that. I'm just not talking about-
So let's, I know, but-
But we're going to vote on each of these items eventually, and you know what's going to happen.
Sure. Just for the audience out there, it wasn't dropped on your desk 10 minutes.
This was not.
Yeah. All right.
This was not, but many times things are, and it's because of whatever reasons, most of them are good. But I think it's important that if we did this in a bipartisan cooperative way, it's palatable. The taxpayers could feel good about it, or they can hate us all, one or the other.
Sure.
But I think we'd have the chance to at least participate a little bit.
Sure. Alderman Newjane?
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for looking into those numbers, because I'm, you know, I kind of threw that number out there for $200,000 because I know they're also short-staffed. So I'm assuming, you know, they would need about three or four more people because they're kind of, you know, working on skeletons and bones right now.
The senior center does have three full-time budget positions. I believe those three positions are all staffed at this time, and they do have, I believe, two part-time employees who assist with the operations of the center as well. And I think sometimes they do work with some other agencies that can provide services.
For some community hours, yeah.
But again, it would be a discussion if they felt that they needed additional staff in order to-
Well, especially if we were to elongate the hours and make it until 5 o'clock and what have you.
Right.
You know, that's kind of where my number comes in. And just want to go on record. Obviously, you know, I'm going to support this because I think the money is being allocated to necessary items that the city needs. You know, just in the future, you know, I would love for, if any, extra money to be, the senior center to be in consideration.
Sure. And it won't be long before departments are working on their fiscal year '27 budget requests. That process starts in the middle of November, so it may be something that-
Thank you.
That the department will consider as they're working on the request for next year.
Thank you for your time.
Further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call. Yep. Item seven. Alderman Alsop?
No.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Newjane? What'd he say?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't have any sure talk. Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Rodriguez?
Nay.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman?
No.
Alderman DiGio Vincarlo?
Yes.
We have nine and three. Nine yes, three no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and item number seven is approved with respect to item number 19. Chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldean, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number 19. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Home Loan Assistance Agreement with Lazarus Project LLC for the redevelopment of 693 East Main Street, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Hunter. Is there discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Alderman Alsop, excuse me.
You didn't get away that easy. As one of the Aldermen that represents this particular area, I do pay attention to what's going on quite a bit down there. And I will say this, that the building that burned down had a tremendous use and a tremendous service to the people of Waterbury, and it was sadly missed for a very short period of time because the owner stepped up and provided the building across the street to fill in some of the more necessary services. It's very hard to sit here and say no to something that provides services to direct comfort people versus make them feel better. This is quality of life. This is actually, in some cases, life support. So I'm going to go along with this, but I want to also state this, that as the Alderman in the district, and if I'm lucky enough to survive in November, I would have to pledge to these people in the district that the city will have to monitor what's going on down there and make sure that their neighborhood doesn't get negatively influenced by it, and hopefully the building across the street that's servicing them now will be turned back over to general use because all the services will be provided in this new building. And it behooves us as a city and whatever departments, whatever part we have in this, to make sure that it's run properly, that things are serviced properly, that the people in the neighborhood are not affected negatively by it, and that it can turn out to be the great thing that it should be. But that's going to be us as the government to make sure that that happens because, as we all know, people just don't do things because they want to. But I know the owner of this building, if it's going to be the same owner as previous, was very good about making sure that things were run properly and policed properly and taken care of with little or no effect, negative effect. So that being said, again, I'm making the pledge now that, you know, I as the Alderman in that, one of the Aldermen in that district will be available and will follow through on any complaints, and I hope that the city government and the police department, fire department, and everybody else, the health department, everybody else involved, is going to step up and make sure that this thing can be as good as it's supposed to be versus a pain in the neck to everybody in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Further discussion? Alderman Rodriguez? Oh, excuse me. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I'd just like to first just thank you for recognition, Mr. President. Want to agree with my colleague, Alderman Alsop, and also my colleagues who spoke earlier in support of this project. I think unfortunately, there's a great city need for projects like this. I think fortunately, we have an opportunity as a body to support this project and to give hope to those who are really trying to get either back on their feet or turn their lives around. I remember and talked to people who remember when the original building was, when it burned, and the effect that it had on that community, which was already distressed. And I think any opportunity that we have to revitalize the neighborhood, revitalize the community, and provide services for people to get back on their feet, I think we should take that opportunity as a city. I do know that there were remarks made and concerns regarding Sacred Heart Church and the proposed uses for that, but I'll say it again. I think the reality is that we have a need for multiple services and multiple pathways for our communities to thrive. So I will be voting in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Look, it's not against the project itself to do better, and that's, that was my biggest concern here. It's not the project. It's not what they're doing with the project or the construction of this project, or the money that are going to be used for this. My concern for this project is there's two places kind of doing the same thing that, well, that's what their plan is, but, or if it changes, that's a different story. But that's what they sold us, that Sacred Heart was going to be utilized for the same, kind of the same thing that you guys are planning to do. So, you know, having that and that, we don't have a record of what the homeowners in that area are saying, if it's good for them, if it's not for the area, the values of the properties, how they're going to be affected, all that stuff. It's not against you guys of what you guys are doing, or what we're doing for the homeless, or for the people that are going to be transitioned through that project. It's overcrowding the same area for the same thing. That's my biggest concern. That's why I, that vote no was for me because of that issue, you know? There's a lot of stuff that, and that's why we wanted it to table, because we don't have everything in our table to say, you know what, yes, the homeowners in that area like it, yes, this is, project's going to be doing this and that, and then that Sacred Heart is going to be used for other things that are not going to be in the same. So I still, I'm concerned about that, and that was my reason why I no. It's not against the project or what they do of the project to the community, is the way that the information is not in our table. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
There's a great city need for all of our constituents to be taken into consideration. We've had no outreach to the community. I tabled it to find out if there's been, I tabled it and asked if we can have a timeline for Sacred Heart because it's literally two buildings down. I was voted, it was voted out. I guess to support the homeless, but how about everybody else in that surrounding area? Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I, through you, Mr. President, I disagree to say that voting for this project is voting for the interests of taxpayers in that area or taxpayers in Waterbury. I've already stated why I'm in favor of this project, but I do disagree respectfully to say that voting for this project is voting against the interests of taxpayers in this city.
Understood. Further discussion? All right. I'm going to call the question. We're getting, there's no, the debate is going nowhere. We're touching on the same, we're touching on the same subjects over and over. So unless there's something new to add here, we're going to call the question and call the vote, so.
It's not against taxpayers. It's against the people that are living in the city.
Alderwoman Zimmerman, please. I didn't recognize you. Let's not talk now. Okay? We're going to call the question. I'm calling the vote. There's a second to call a question. I need a second, order to call. Okay, thank you.
I don't even understand, like, I don't, through you, Mr. President, I don't understand. Isn't this the place where we talk, or are we not allowed to do that?
It is, but the debate is going, it's the same thing over and over that we're saying, so there's no new discovery here. So we'll call the vote.
And you're making that decision?
What's that?
That's your decision, correct?
It is my decision, yeah.
Thank you.
It's any chair's decision, so we'll call the vote. Okay? Roll call. Yes. Alderman Alsop?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Newjane?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez?
No.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman?
No.
Alderman DiGio Vincarlo?
Yes.
Eleven yes, two no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and item number 19 is approved with respect to the standing committee. The chair will recognize Alderman Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $22,873.98, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman, motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. That is our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Alsop?
Yes. Sacred Heart. Sacred Heart, and absolutely nothing has taken place. There was purchasers for two pieces of that property, never happened. There was grants going to be given, there was going, the school's going to be renovated, hasn't happened. The church is deteriorating. I've asked questions about the cell phone tower, if that's still in operation. I didn't mean it, don't shoot at me. The cell phone tower, I don't know if that's existing, I haven't had that answer yet. Just everything about it, all the questions I've asked, and all it's doing is costing us money to sit there and deteriorate. The people in that neighborhood have complained about the homelessness, the homeless people, the way that the neighborhood is being treated, but it mostly in regards to the city's abandonment of the Sacred Heart property, and total ignorance as to what's going to happen to that place. Then the other subject is the tax-exempt status of several different properties in this city. The most prominent that I can point out is, again, the St. Peter and Paul Church in Recre area. No answers have been given to me for that, and there's absolutely no excuse why there isn't an answer, and the answer should be, we put it back on the tax rolls. But not even being, not even a single word to me. I'm being ignored, and again, we come up with surpluses, but just think, if we went after the people who are supposed to be paying taxes, what we'd have? It'd be a lot better for us, all of us. I might put a cross on the roof of my house and start preaching on the front porch. Can I get tax-exempt status? That would make me happy, but it wouldn't be right. Let's stop. Let's get responsible to the people. That's my answer. Get Sacred Heart either off our back, or let's make use of it, or let's get the rest of these tax-exempt properties back to where they're productive for the city. Even if it's $5,000 a year, who cares? We got to get it. We're charging people that can't afford the things. It's time that we started getting responsible to the people. That's my final statement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President. Just want to mention, for the purpose of my recusal from item seven, I currently sit as the treasurer for Waterbury Promise, so that's the reason why I recuse myself. On another note, I know I've requested, and I'm just asking for follow-up from the traffic calming study that was done, or in the process of being done. Been fielding a lot of concerns regarding traffic, traffic patterns and speeding, and I think it's important that we know at least where the cog is in terms of its study and the findings it has thus far. Even if it's not finished, I do think we need an update as soon as possible.
Okay. We'll reach out to Roy Cavno and get a, get a timeframe or see if when he could actually speak to us, okay? Alderman Taladine.
Thank you. I just wanted to let folks know that on Saturday, October 4th, Riverside Cemetery is doing an event called Spirits Come Alive, where they're actually going to do little vignettes from famous folks in the cemetery that relate to Waterbury's history, and so we're trying to spread the word about this great event on Saturday, October 4th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. You can get a one-hour time slot, and you can find the information on Riverside Cemetery's Facebook, if you're interested in going.
All right, very good. Anybody else? I will say Saturday is the, don't forget the gathering downtown, be an all-day event downtown, so just keep that in mind, that the gathering will be the parade first and then the gathering down here, so. Anything else? Alderman Dorso.
Motion adjourned.
Motion made, second, we are adjourned.